Call the order of work session for City of East Grant Forks for Tuesday, December 12th. It is now five o'clock. Would City Coach please call roll?
We receive Gander, Council President Robert Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Andrew Emery.
Here.
Council Members' Board's Better.
Here.
Ben Chachubinski.
Here.
Dale Nelson.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does turn form number one, request to file plan specifications and proceed with advertising forbids for the 2023 city project number two, the LeFave Park improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Council. So we'll be looking to file plan and specifications for the LeFave Park project. As you're aware, we bid that project last May. Cost estimates are at bids came in substantially higher than what we were anticipating at that time. So the council rejected the bids, you know, with the thought again that we'd rebid it, you know, early winter here. So, you know, one thing we did with this updated plan set is we have broken into three different proposals, like proposal one's kind of the street improvement work on First Street. Proposal two's kind of the boat ramp parking, parking lot area. And then proposal three is the landscaping seating areas kind of, you know, to the south of the boat ramp new parking lot area. So, so again, I think if bids come in high again, we'll have a little more flexibility on what we, you know, could award. I know Reed did go back and kind of requested additional funding for this project. So I don't know, Reed, if you can give an update on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Emery. We did receive approval to basically to be fully funded to the amount of the low bid last that we received last year. The second portion or the second half of that funding now is about 888,000 in additional funding. That does still require legislative approval at the legislative session this upcoming year, but for all intents and purposes, we can count on that. It's never been denied when it gets to the legislative level before Reed's legacy funds. So the requirement of that of the total project, the city's committed to 20% and the state would be an 80% match on that project.
Thank you, Reed. So, so we'll be, I guess, bringing those, you know, updated plans and specs to the council meeting next week and then just looking for authorization to proceed with advertising and setting a bid date. So that's kind of, I guess, an update of where we're at with that project.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Emery? Seen answer. Want to move on to number two, discussion on Demers Avenue Traffic Signal Replacement Project.
Thank you again. So the city had entered into a cooperative agreement with MINDOT to replace the traffic signals on Demers at Second Street and then also Fourth Street. When they gave us a, you know, the cooperative agreement with that, they had a preliminary Schedule I in there which showed the city's share of that project of being about 283,000. They just recently received bids, I think it was the beginning of last week. They did only receive one bid, but based on the bid that they did receive, the city's share would increase from the 283,000 up to about almost 562,000. When I did get that, I contacted them right away, just to make them aware that I did not feel that the council would ever go for that. I mean, we don't even have sufficient funds really in our state aid account balance at this time to, you know, to cover that cost. So, so I have been in communication with them. You know, with only receiving one bid being that much over their estimate, they're leaning towards rejecting bids also. And they're actually thinking about possibly rebidding it and doing the traffic signals just at Fourth Street. Second Street's probably still going to have to be done within, you know, two to five years. They know Fourth Street is probably more of an immediate need, especially with that one light pole that's always getting hit with kind of that right turn truck movement at Demers and forth there. So, so I, you know, I stressed pretty strongly that, you know, I did not feel the city council would want to move forward with this project. But, you know, I think they wanted me to review it with you, maybe have some type of consensus, you know, where you guys are at, you know, if you're fine with moving ahead with just the, you know, signal replacement at Fourth, you know, because their concern is even if they rebid it with both traffic signals, you know, if it comes in at maybe the city's share is 450,000, you know, at that point with what we have in our state aid construction fund balance right now, you know, would we want to move forward? So I think that was their thought partially two of why they would just narrow it down just to the one set of traffic signals. Hopefully two, rebidding it, getting at least two, three bids so we have a better determination as far as if it's competitive bids or, you know, are they just that far off on their estimate? So I guess really tonight, I think, was, you know, a little bit more for your informational purposes, but, you know, again, I think would like to be able to go back to MINDOT, have some type of feeling where the council's leaning. I think they were hoping for that.
So did they say, I guess I didn't see it in there either, did they say why it was so high? Was it the materials or was it the labor actually?
The best they can tell from what they received, sounds like material prices have drastically increased. Kind of surprised me because just MINDOT statewide, just the database they have of projects to look at, you know, costs of, you know, really surprised, I think, everybody that numbers came in that high. So again, is it just one bidder, knowing he's the only bidder, really jacking his price up? And so that's where I think they're really hoping too, if they rebid it, they get at least a couple bids. So better comparison.
Mr. Better.
Thank you.
I'm okay with going with just Fourth Street now and seeing what the bids come in on Fourth Street.
Actually, the road anymore? So do we need to bring Cabela's in, share in that leg of traffic?
That would have to be a discussion probably with Cabela's if they would help in a cost share. As far as MINDOT goes, being it's more of a private entrance, you know, they're not asking for a cost share from Cabela's. That would be at the city's responsibility. So if the city wanted to approach them about some type of cost share, the city could do that. But as far as MINDOT's concerned, it's the city's responsibility.
I understand that. Yeah, the city should be telling Cabela's that this is your share of the new light if you indeed want a light in the Olympia Park and Lot.
Correct.
Otherwise, we'll eliminate it and it's be a three-way light.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
I think you're spot on with your priority on Fourth first. I think we're going to also gain that left turn arrow right there for the truck traffic that's doing that turning on that particular area. I think that's going to be a big upgrade compared to what we have now. So I'd like to see that one go.
Okay.
May also have any preference?
Yeah, I think I got what I need. I'll kind of relay that message to them tomorrow and then they'll, you know, like you said, they were 99% sure they were just going to reject bids, but wanted some feedback from the council. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll move on to number three, School Resource Officer update. Chief Fiddler.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to update council where things stand with the school resource officer situation. As you're all well aware, we decided earlier this fall to suspend our MOU that we have with the public schools district regarding the school resource officer. We've continued talks with the school in-house, the mayor, myself, Mr. Olstead, Nick Gunderson, our school resource officer, Mr. Hutton, and we've met regularly. And we've met with Mr. Hackbarth on multiple occasions and with, I think, the entire school board, at least the majority of them. And it wasn't the school board, excuse me, a number of the department heads within the school, the principals and vice principals to discuss the situation as well. We've hashed over the situation about as many ways as you possibly can. And I think we finally reached a point where we feel that the benefits of having RSRO back in the schools outweigh the costs of not having him in. And so we're working to try to have that accomplished in the hopefully relatively near future. We are working on a revised MOU that would just cover the remainder of the school year. That's gone back and forth a couple times, but it's definitely still in the draft stage. So nothing ready for public consumption at this point in time.
Chief, I'd appreciate the work on that. I'm assuming that our anticipation timelines, we're going to bring it back to first work session in January then?
Yeah, understanding that the school and Mr. Gallstead, legal counsel, still need to have some back and forth, I would think it'd be the January ninth work session. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows timelines on that. So anybody have any questions for the chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Number four, requests authorization to hire Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Department, excuse me, currently has a vacancy for supervisor. And with this vacancy, we felt that it was a good opportunity to take a look at the department, see how we could streamline things, possibly combine some duties of some descriptions, job descriptions. So our first step in our process of looking in to see how we're going to move forward was to ID the needs of the department. And then we revised a couple of the job descriptions, the foreman position, the supervisor position. We had these job descriptions repointed. The supervisor position actually went down from a 17 to a 16. Some of the duties were moved from there to the foreman position, which increased from a grade 14 to a 15. The civil service reviewed the job descriptions and approved them yesterday. And we're bringing forward, we would like to advertise internally to fill both the foreman and supervisor positions based on the candidates or the applicants that we got. This could leave further vacancies in the department. But we'd just like to see it through and see who we get for candidates.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl? Mayor.
Does this mesh with previous conversations we've had about some of the shifting with our budget?
Yes.
Say anything. Seen none. Appreciate, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, discussion on proposed 2024 budget.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Anderson is passing out a couple of updated documents, the budget summary page and a few of the additional considerations that are still out there to try to come back with the balanced budget. With some updates that have from what was in the agenda, I did email these out earlier today. So if you got them in your email, you could look at them on your computer as well. We have, in the last few days, come to an agreement, a verbal agreement with a third of four union groups. So we have one union left to settle with. And with those kind of assumptions of where we think some salaries and benefits may end up, we've been able to really dig in fully on our salaries and benefits spreadsheet that feeds into our greater budget and have a great understanding of that. And so that's where a lot of the big change comes from the budget summary that was shared on Friday to today, is we feel really confident now that we have an understanding of what our total cost of wages and benefits would be for the city. And so with those changes, and I should touch on that we did in the budget, we did reduce the accounting technician position that we've talked a lot about. We reduced it to a half a year. So it's currently in for basically six months of 2024, if we would be able to move forward with that. And that brings our total deficit to 291,335. And on the sheet that Carla passed out, some of the additional considerations that are still out there, we have the school resource officer, potential revenue that we just touched on at $83,000. That would be the 65% of that school resource officer's wages and benefits. We have the expense reduction that Mr. Stordahl just talked about through the potential movement in Public Works. We think that $70,000 is a really conservative number. As you've heard at previous meetings, I had a $94,000 number in there. We reduce that to 70 just to make sure we're trying to be as conservative as possible in our forecasting. But there is potential that number could be even greater than 70 as far as savings we'll have. And then the last one in this block is the Fund 681 transfer that you've all approved at 73,000 from the Demers Professional Building. We're showing that all transferring to the general fund to be used in calendar year 2024, leaving, if we made all of those moves happen, leaving the new deficit at 64,500. And then the bottom part of the page has still some additional savings and other pieces for consideration that are still out there for discussion. On that note, we did have a regularly scheduled senior center board meeting today. And there are a number of people here that are interested in the topic of the senior center coordinator and the senior center itself and what we may do with that building and the programs and services offered for seniors in our community as well as the position. And so I've had some really good meetings with both Jeremy and Park and Rec and with Charlotte at the library. And I'll ask them to come up and speak a little bit about some of the ideas that we've come together with on programming. But just to go through some of the financial side of things, I think Jeremy passed out a document to each of you two that goes through a couple of different scenarios in the senior center. A couple that I would offer from a dollars and standpoint, the total cost of the senior center coordinator position is about $102,000 a year, wages and benefits. If we were to move forward with an immediate elimination of that position after any severance and estimates on unemployment and any accrual balances that would need to be paid out, we're estimating our 2024 calendar year savings to be around that $78,000 to the general fund. That's the number in the kind of top right of that spreadsheet. Another scenario that we looked at would be the potential reduction of hours for the senior center coordinator versus an immediate elimination of the position. If we reduced it to say 30 hours a week or 75% of the time, that would, that's the criteria in order to be able to provide full benefits to an employee if we pay 30 or if we employ them for 30 hours or more, we'd have the ability to play full benefits and then pro-rated accrual of their vacation sick leave based on the hours they work a week. That we're estimating a savings of about $22,000. I should add, I'm sorry, I breezed over it, on the right-hand side of the column, if we were to look at eliminating the position in the plan that Jeremy and Charlotte are going to talk about, we've looked at three months, give us all, give the city staff three months to try to get organized on what that may look like. If we were going to do it three months, say a March 31 separation from the employee, that savings would be reduced from 78,000 down to about $55,000. I'm sorry, I didn't touch on that as clearly as I should have. The 78,000 is basically looking at January 1. And so that at this point in time, I think even January 1 is, with the process we would need to follow, that's probably fast-tracking it. Going back to the left side of the column, some of my mindset with this discussion and thought process is, and Jeremy and Charlotte will touch on it too, but I think what you're going to hear from them is we talk about what senior center programming would look like without a senior center coordinator position. You're going to hear them talk about that we're going to lean heavily on volunteers to really execute the day-to-day programming that's going to happen in the senior center. There's going to be staff from other departments that are going to be able to spend time at the senior center to make sure the building is staffed. But they will in all likelihood be asked to continue doing some of the duties they currently do at their current office or workstation at the senior center. And so I don't want you all to hear this and think that we'll be able to just exactly replicate everything that's happening there as it looks today on day one with a reorganization of work duties. And so that's why we came up with this left-hand column talking about a one to two-year transition, is that may be something that is desirable for you to consider in this discussion is, do we start to say, we want to start to phase ourself into the elimination of certain positions in the city? That would lead to the reduction of hours, number one. Even beyond that, there could be an opportunity for us to engage the senior center coordinator in a discussion of what her current duties are and look at reclassifying the job based on what duties we think are still desirable that that person may be able to have and come up with some additional savings. So that's what we're showing when I talk about reclassifying the position and it stays a full-time position. Those are just wild guesses at a $22,000 savings. That's looking at if we, if it was reduced to a grade 10 from a grade 15 down to a grade 10, which would be more in line with like what our administrative assistant type positions are paid, you're seeing what some of those total reductions in cost could be within that position. So I think with that, unless there are questions specifically about some of those dollars and cents, maybe I'll ask Jeremy and Charlotte to touch base in a little bit more detail on what programming could look like.
Thank you.
All right. So as far as our programming goes, Jeremy and I have talked about the staff that we would have that we could share with the building. And we, to take 20 hours out of each of our departments and have them spend 20 hours to make it 40 at the senior center is just something that would diminish the other departments. So we talked about opening the library then from, you know, 10:00 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, 3:00 in the afternoon. And we would have someone there and the programs that are happening currently would continue as is. I know there's been some wonderful talk about the things we can do with the library and that we could do more things at the senior center. The problem with that is that building is not set up to do that. So that can't happen. As far as the schedule for activities, Jeremy shared that with me from the senior center. And sale, which is the stay active and independently.
Independent for life.
And independent for life, thank you, would be the only program that we wouldn't continue. Otherwise, everything that's on the schedule would stay the way it is. And then back to the volunteers also. We use volunteers at the library a lot and some of the members themselves volunteer at the senior center to keep those programs going. So that would have to continue. We'd definitely rely on them.
And I think what Reed touched on, it looks good on paper here, but there would definitely be some bumps in the road as we work through things because we all know that the coordinator there is doing a lot more, probably behind-the-scenes work with programming and different things that aren't easy to put down on paper. So understand that there would certainly be some bumps in the road as we go along.
And just one other point. At the library, if you come in to visit, you will see we have people scheduled at the front desk. They're the ones that greet and meet everyone, get them in the right direction, help them find their information. Then we have people in the background. Over at the senior center, we have one person and that person's doing all of that. So if we bring one of our people over there, they will have to continue what they do in our department and also be the meet and greet person and keep things going over there.
So yeah, if we had a staff member over there, they would work out of the coordinator's office, answering phones, doing the meet and greet, also trying to balance some of their current administrative duties that they already have from a different location. We'd probably have to work out something technical with phone lines and things like that. But they would be certainly taking calls at the senior center, forwarding them back to the library, forwarding them back to the parks office, all the while still trying to keep things moving there. So if you look at the next item on the LSS, we've had some discussions with them. One of the items that just actually kind of came up today, we'd want to kind of renew our lease with them and look at what maybe they can offer to the city as far as some sort of kickback for rent or something like that. That kind of transitions, excuse me, right down into the next topic, which is building maintenance. Along with LSS operating out of that kitchen, there's going to be additional costs that are going to come along with that. So we've already touched on the HVAC with the commercial kitchen. We know that that's going to be a line item of about $125,000. To redo that HVAC without the commercial kitchen is looking at $65,000. And then we looked at, there was a roof report done back in 2021 that said that we had about 10 years left on that lifespan. Took the square footage of that roof and compared it to what Water and Light just paid for their roof recently. It's the same 60 mil ballast roof, just to kind of get a cost estimate of what we think that'll cost. And that's going to come in at $234,000. So these are just items that we bring up because, you know, with the reduction, if depending on which way we decide to go as far as the transition, there's still going to be a lot of costs coming up with the building. So just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that as we're making these decisions. And then the last item there is on, is it just a timeline. It's broken down in a couple of different scenarios. But first thing we have to figure out is what does that position look like? The second thing we should touch on is what are the hours of the senior center going to be? If we make a transition with changing that coordinator position, we're going to have to look at changing the hours of the senior center. Staffed hours would look like 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM with open hours of 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then the last item there, at least for, right away, right after January will be, what do we, how do we want to continue with LSS? Do we want them, do we want to ask them to put more into the building? And then as we transition further on, then ultimately we'll have to decide if it's a building that we're going to reinvest in and continue to keep it the way it is, or is it time to sell it at that point? So, and then I should touch, one item I missed is within the commercial kitchen, there'll be some additional maintenance items. One item that was recently brought to attention is a commercial stove. Just with a little bit of research I had today, if you were, if we were to replace it with that exact stove, we're looking at roughly $10,000. We could probably find a used piece of equipment somewhere else for cheaper than that, but that's if we wanted to go brand new.
And just to add, if you're looking at, if you're looking at long-term planning instead of this immediate, you know, January 1 kind of thing, for, you know, programming, a lot of things would have to change in that building. The rooms, the kitchen.
Yeah. The senior center, the senior center won't look today as it would with these timelines that we put forward. There would definitely be, the programming will look the same, but I think the attention that our senior population is getting for the programming will certainly be different. Have to rely heavily on the volunteers to make that transition as smoothest as possible or seamless as possible.
Mr. Williams.
Are these hours you're talking about, is that just five days? Or special paid?
Yeah, they're just open during the week. But when we had talked about splitting the days where Parks is there two days a week and the library is there two days a week and then we'd close after lunch was cleaned up on Friday. So it would be a short day to make sure that, you know, our staff gets work done back in the other departments too. But now, yeah, it's just five days. So there's no evening activities or weekends regularly.
What are the current hours over there?
Eight to 4:30.
Four thirty. So this is a little bit of a change.
Aaron.
Few comments where what you're proposing here, right, is we were tasked with the idea of looking at transitioning this current position. of looking at transitioning this current position of the program director currently. So if if the program director stayed in its current format, it's no cost savings. Plan one, I don't know which one you want to call, plan one or plan two, right? Plan one being the one-to-two-year transition and plan three maybe being the three-to-six-month transition, right? We're just kind of, I guess I'm trying to clarify for the public as far as these are just plans that are being proposed currently at this point, right? And that we're looking for a direction from the city as far as which one we want to pursue. There has not been a decision that has been made currently, right? One other comment to you, Dale, is that the the senior center is open for senior center programming from Monday through Friday. However, there is an opportunity for anybody within the community to rent that building after hours and on the weekends. And that is one thing that has been a huge topic of conversation in regards to what can we fill that space with in off-hours to help offset the cost of the building? So there are maybe opportunities for that building to be used more efficiently than it currently is. And how we go about creating those opportunities, I don't know what that looks like, right? We also talked about the idea that there would be a reduction in hours that it is staffed by the city, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the programming would have to change for the senior center group. It's just that those hours that are it's not being staffed by city employees, they would have to take on those responsibilities.
Anything else, Karen?
Not yet.
Okay. So on my understanding, I guess currently, who rents it? Sundays, we have a church group that rents it, correct?
Yep.
And they're every Sunday?
And then, yeah. And then there's other sporadic rentals here and there.
But the only constant one is that church group?
Yep.
Just for conversation, and it would be a little bit of background. I don't unless the senior group came to us and requested it, I don't see that it would be a good thing to roll our senior center into another of our facilities. I don't see that it would be a good thing to roll it into a corner of an arena somewhere, and I don't see that it would be good to roll it into our library. I don't see that. I want them to have their own hangout, their own kind of clubhouse, place to do stuff. But I do think it's a reasonable question to ask, if we were going to build it from scratch, what would the footprint of the building look like? Now, we own it. It doesn't cost us too much. It's utility cost if it's a bigger space than we need or if it's not efficiently insulated as well as it could be to the current code. So none of that is such a big deal. That's not going to eat our lunch. But if we're putting on a membrane roof that's twice the size of what we would really want or need, suddenly, over a span of years, those costs are unnecessarily high. So if we decide that there would be a footprint, a freestanding senior center footprint that could look a little different, maybe a little more compact, still good parking, still all the amenities that we want, but in a more intentional footprint to service the needs that they have going forward, I think that's worth discussing before we do all the necessary steps of HVAC in there or maybe the larger membrane roof in another five years or so, just to really optimize the footprint of what is needed for these folks and, you know, to be as cost-effective as we can be. That would be a thought that I would want to register.
One other topic that I wanted to bring up is Lutheran Social Services. And this service that is currently being offered to our community, when we had the meeting with the senior center earlier today, when Judy was hired, she indicated that there were 10 to 15 meals that were being served out of the senior center on a daily basis. Currently, they're serving a minimum of 85 to 100 meals on a daily basis. So this is something that I really think that we have to take into consideration when we are thinking about this footprint, if this is something that the city is going to continue to do or where this service can be offered within the city. When we spoke with the lady who just happened to be there today from Lutheran Social Services, she had said that it's going to take a minimum of nine months to a year to get a kitchen up to code to be able to offer this to the community. And I really believe too that not only has the offering of the meals through the senior center offered a great service to the community, but I think that it has really brought some of those seniors together too. It's a great resource because they understand the importance of it. So some of the seniors from the senior center have taken that responsibility on and currently are the drivers for those meals. So I do think that that is a great relationship that they have created there, and that's something that we have to think about also.
I like the thought of all those folks living independently with good nutrition, right? And that could be the difference between them being able to live independently or not, is access to that really trustworthy nutrition that they can plan on day by day. Yeah.
Mr. Reeve.
There's another community nearby that has no agreement with LSS and has opened their own kitchen in their own senior center, and they're doing quite well. The funds that are generated from that go back into the facility for various other things. So it's there is another option here, and that one could be looked at a little closer. I might know someone I can talk to, but that's it's another idea.
It should be noted in that idea, if we want to look at that road, that's a privately-owned and operated senior center. It's not a city-owned.
The city gives them a stipend every year, X number of dollars. That's all they give them. Then they're on their own on the rest.
Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. As much as I'd like to say this might be a one- or two-year transition if we put the building up. So yes, we want to plan for a one- or two-year transition, but it could happen a lot quicker than that. We keep talking about we're going to eliminate the senior center coordinator position, but if we roll them in with the library, it may be a library position that is eliminating not the senior center coordinator position, and we need to think along those lines. I think the transition has to be that, yes, we're going to put up for sale, whether we put it up for sale January 1st or June 1st of next year or January 1st of 2025. We need to be now working towards that end goal so that when it does sell, all the programs are already moved out of there. I envision when we talk about LSS and the food program, I could see them partnering with either one of our fraternal organizations or one of the churches. They've all got commercial kitchens and wouldn't have to do much to get it up to speed. And some of the fraternal organizations may be very open to having that in within their organization, and that would be an opportunity then to move some of the senior center programming to that fraternal organization. They go there for lunch, and maybe they stick around for bingo. They've all got side rooms that they can use and may be open to that kind of a programming, but we need to approach them for that. Same with churches. If they're going there for their noon lunch, and they may hang around at the church then for some programming that could go on at that church at that same time then. So going back to this, this is, yes, we'd like it to be a one- or two-year transition, but it may actually only be a six-month transition because it may sell that quick. I don't want to lose any of the programming there. I want it to even be additional programming that we can provide, especially, like I said, if it gets into a fraternal organization, we start working with their members or a church group and getting to work with their members. This thing may balloon into something that's a lot bigger than what it is now.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
I guess just just to clarify, we're just looking for some direction, you know? Which which direction should we be pointing? Should we be looking at the sale of the building? Should we be looking at the coordinator position? Like, just just want to make sure that we understand which direction we should be pointing our resources to so we can work efficiently to come up with a solution.
See if there's anything?
My vote would be put the building up for sale January 1st and see how it goes.
And my vote would be we want a freestanding senior center, period, whether this one or another one. So if we were to be transitioning to another facility, we'd have that ready to go before we would sell the current one. That would be my preference, unless the senior group says, no, 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 we're happy at the library, or we love the idea of one of the fraternal organizations. We want to serve that that group of people, and if they have a strong preference to maintain a freestanding facility, I'd like to find a way to do it. That's my strong preference.
I guess I would like to work closely with the senior center and develop a plan for them. I do feel that currently they have a little they have a feeling of discourse towards the city council right now because they don't feel that they have necessarily been part of this. And to put the building up to up for sale January 1, I just feel that this part of our community would not look favorably at that. I would like to see a transition happen where we work with them and establish that freestanding building, if that's what we that's the direction that we do take, before we do put that building up for sale. I think that would be putting the cart before the horse, because if it does sell February 1, we don't have a place for them. We don't have a home for them. We don't have we wouldn't have a home February 1, according to the LSS lady today, for those meals on wheels. I think that it would have a huge butterfly, a negative, huge butterfly effect on the community.
I also think if we were to sell the building, we would need a senior center coordinator to help make that transition smooth. So that's why I think we have to decide which direction we want to go. If we sell the building, I think we're really going to need someone in that position to make sure that the the programming can can happen.
Ben.
Thank you. Mr. Hutton, I'm looking at this, and we're our deficit is $64,504 in the budget, and that's with or without the coordinator position eliminated.
Thank you. So that's $64,000. That's assuming the three lines above it, you all approve that, and assuming the SRO will go back and revenue will be generated. But to your specific question, the full senior center position remains in the budget, showing that $64,000 deficit, so the full $102,000 and change.
So if we were to eliminate that position, our budget would actually be at a surplus?
Yeah, depending upon when-
When.
A separation would happen, that would dictate what the 2024 calendar savings are.
Okay.
Yeah, but near balanced.
And then we still have these other carryovers that we can account for in the budget?
Yeah, those are carryovers that we're projecting from 2023.
Right.
That will be funds budgeted and unspent in 2023 that if not budgeted to be used as an expense in '24, they will be just in our general fund and theoretically an increase to our fund balance.
Okay. So for me, I don't think we need to sell the senior center. And I see this as something that maybe we keep the position in full and discuss it for a year, because if we've got these carryovers, seems to me like the budget could handle that.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Yeah, one of the things I want to go over too is for people to understand too, this process, going through this, even talking about this position, is not the only position we talked about over the last eight, six to eight months. It's not it's been a part of a bigger discussion in our total budget and looking at all our departments, figuring out what we can look at to cut, to move things around. So this is something that we've talked about for a while and had some discussion on with the help of our finance committee. So I guess I want people to know that this is not something that we're just throwing out to see, oh, let's do this because we need to balance the budget. No, that's not what we're doing. We're looking at not looking for short-term cost change, looking for long-term to make sure that we carry on what services we need for the city. You know, we, like I said, there's not been a discussion or solution or finalization. We voted for this. It's done? Nope. Not going to talk about it anymore. No, we're not doing that. So I think I would be willing to look at maybe what we can do over the next few months. There's there's no way I'd want to say, okay, we're going to do this January 1st for that. But I think it's going to take a couple of months to have more discussion on it and, like Karen said, have the senior center involved. So that'd be my wish. So I'm going to go to Mr. Larson, and I'm going to ask if anybody in the audience wants to say anything, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, great comments all around. Personally, I don't see the the big win in selling the the building itself. I feel like the senior center is fairly low in cash value, but it's it's high in community impact. And so like the the services that it provides to the senior population now, or if we look down the road, that that building with the commercial kitchen, with the parking lot, it could be many different things in the future. It could address some of our pre our preschool shortages, our early childhood education things, if there was a change down the road. But to sell the building in a less-than-desirable spot for future development for a short-term cash windfall, I just don't see the benefit. I'd rather ride it out with that building, knowing that there is some upcoming maintenance costs, of course, and understand how that building can serve the community down the road. So I'm not excited about selling the building short-term, but I do think we should continue to look at efficiencies, both in staffing costs as well as increasing the the revenue. Karen had a great idea of working with the senior center to look for more opportunities for for building rental, to try to bring up some of that revenue side, working throughout the the next year. I do feel like we're going to be in this same conversation at this time next year. Looking at our budget, if we're only funding half of the salary for the accounting technician, well, we're going to have 12 months next year. So we're going to be back in in this same conversation again, and we need to continue to revisit these and look for efficiencies. But selling the building now, I just don't think is in our best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I guess I would like to open up to anybody that's in the audience who wants to come speak, if they would like to come up to the microphone, state their name and address. It'd be great. Just want to make sure the mic's on, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dottie Stone, and I'm a senior. I guess what I heard tonight, though, was a little confusing to me from this point of view. They haven't even talked to LLS to see if they would help with anything to do with the kitchen. I mean, before all this jumps into where you're at, shouldn't you know what the you've already been told the roof's going? You had 10 years. You've already it started in '21. We're in '23. So by, you know, '25, you should be knowing what you're going to do here. One. Number two, I mean, in other words, it's a big thing to the seniors. It's someplace to go, it's things to do. And I realize all you people are working people yet, but it makes a difference. So I guess from my point of view, you're not really looking at the big picture. You're looking at, you know, the library is fine, but if we wanted to go over the library, we'd go over. It's an open library. I mean, you get to go there, you get to laugh, nobody's hushing you. There's no, you know, you're not crammed in a room. I mean, there's a lot of things that are beneficial to that. We all go and have dinner together. I mean, this is something that's important. So I realize finances are always the number-one concern over everything, but I don't think you've looked at all your avenues yet. I mean, we have churches. How many churches are in East Grand Forks? I don't know this because I've only been here two years. How many churches are in East Grand Forks? You mean, they couldn't donate something to the senior center? I'm just saying, I just think that there's ways to raise funds. I mean, if you need the building, because I understand it's people want this building, okay, if you need the building for something else, then why hasn't it been planned to get a senior building that has a kitchen, has everything, so it's just you go from one to the other? That hasn't been done. The cart is before the horse here, and I think this is a little, you know, it's not fair to the senior centers.
I think to address that we haven't looked at having in other locations, you know, we had the plan with our our arenas that we were going to look at in between the two arenas- two arenas on the south end, that there would be an area that we would create for seniors in the senior centers to be able to utilize some of the arenas walking, or whatever it may be, just different things. So I think we've looked at that in the past, which we've had to scale that back too now because of how much things have cost. So to that aspect of us not looking in the future, okay, if we do this with this building, where would we have them? So that was a discussion that we've had the last couple of years. We've been working on it.
But it's, okay, for two years, and it still hasn't developed the whole
Well, no, because it costs so much, we had to scale back our project and our arena projects. And also, we had to go through the legislators to get approval to do our sales taxes for that. And to do the remodels of that, the stuff we need to do for the ADA and everything like that. So plus, now it has to go back to our citizens in November of next year because legislative waited a year to do it for us. So now we have to go to November of '24 to do that. So it's delaying when we can look at things just for that aspect of it. But it was looked at in the project of doing that, of having that option to, okay, let's do this, as we can make an, an area here where it's going to be able to be used by everybody. But that's kind of been scaled back a little bit. So we're back to looking at it, understanding and trying to figure out what we can do. So us not looking at the full picture of it, I don't see that.
If I could.
Just hang on a second.
Yeah, you go ahead.
And I don't see us holding back and not taking into account what it would do to our citizens. So to say that we're short-sighted of this is not correct, because we have had many discussions this whole summer, all fall, to find out what we can do across the whole city, of wondering how we can, can we do this, can we do that, in every department that we have. So it's not something that we're looking at, okay, let's just not have one. That's not what we're doing.
Oh, and I, and I understand that. But I'm just saying, in other words, a few areas that need to be checked before you get too far ahead.
And LSS has been talked to many times about, we've had discussions with them on, okay, can you guys pay 10% or 5% or a penny or two pennies
Their answer is.
For every meal? Am I understanding that, well, we don't do that? Is my understanding?
Yeah, so to clarify that question, as recently as, it was July or August of this summer, I had a discussion with the regional manager for LSS that oversees our site. And it, it had been shared with us by Judy that other sites paid a dime per meal that's prepared at the location. And so we reached out to ask the, the manager at the time, who I understand no longer works there, to ask if that's something they would consider for us. And the answer that I was given was, it's highly unlikely. My answer would be no. And the reason they said is that there are already more costs at our site than what they can justify being able to pay rent for the site. That was the same answer we received probably five years ago when we asked. Now, all that said, today, we had a different LSS regional manager at the meeting, and she had a very different tone. And, and of course, she was in the meeting in front of us, and the other managers have been phone calls. But her tone today was that there is a possibility, or could be a possibility, there'd be some rents paid for use of the senior center. Now, that said, she did temper the enthusiasm of that to say that when we talk about rents paid, we're talking about two, maybe $300 a month. So I would expect our utility bills to be somewhere between $15,000 to $20,000 a year, and we'd be collecting $3,000, $4,000 from LSS?
Okay, so you don't exactly know what the electric bill is?
No, I know exactly what the utility bills are. I'm saying, and being able to relate it to how much the kitchen operation costs us, we don't have a way to separate the cost of the kitchen operation from the rest of the building.
Right. But all I'm saying is, in other words, okay, I realize that it's a pretty good-sized building, and I realize it's getting older, somewhat falling apart to some degree, I guess if you want to say that. But I mean, in other words, at the moment, there really isn't a whole lot of other options available to us. Secondly, I mean, in other words, it's, because it's already grandfathered in, nobody's breathing down your neck to get all these things done exactly. I mean, you know it's going to have to be done in seven years for absolute sure. So I mean, you're looking at that. But in other words, I just think that, that, you know, like you said, you had followed up, but it wasn't until today that somebody was willing. I mean, that's what I'm seeing. You need to get more people to agree and get definite answers. I mean, this is a big thing to the community, and it's a big thing, obviously, to the city council, to, to be footing the bill for this building. And I get that.
Yep.
But I mean, no matter where you go, you're going to foot a bill. So this one's already in existence.
The other thing I was going to add about our connection to Lutheran Social Services is, we approached them to see if they could do a grant proposal for some of these infrastructure costs, the HVAC, the roof. And their response to that one was, we can't do a grant proposal to solicit funds for a building that we don't own. So just know, the connections we've had with LSS have been very extensive. We're not going off willy-nilly with LSS. We're trying to bring in any reasonable stream of revenue, whether it is from their operation or grants that they could propose or, or request. We're trying every possible thing we can with LSS, and we'll take funds from any reasonable source that we can. There's been a lot of work into this. It, it, just please know, we deeply love our senior citizens, we really want to exceed their expectations. We look at what they've given to our community, you know, raising families here, many of them, and the amount of taxes they've paid over a lifetime in our city. It's a big deal. We get it. We want to do right by our senior citizens. If we fail our senior citizens, it's, it's a colossal failure. We're not going to do that.
Well, I have another question. I mean, I don't know this because I really haven't looked into it, but I mean, there aren't any grants for this, this city, for senior citizens, considering all the programs that are out there in the state of Minnesota for senior citizens? And there isn't any way that you can raise some money through grant monies that could be done? But it's a matter of research, of course, but...
Yeah, we've tried all different angles. Just know, though, for example, to the roof thing, you know, it looks like a big number, and it is a big number. These are numbers that the city is totally familiar with, right? If we own that building, it will be properly maintained. It won't fall apart, it won't go into disrepair, it won't start to leak, it will be maintained to the standard of any other building that we own, right? So if the decision is to keep that building, I guarantee, whether I'm on the council or not, it will not fall into disrepair. It's going to be maintained, as it is now, very well. So just have no worries if the decision amongst this group, one year, five year, 10 years from now, is to retain that building, which it'll be, I think that or another one, it'll be maintained well. We, we have it prioritized against our, all of our building maintenance needs. If we own that building, when that day comes, it'll have a new roof, and it'll be paid for through our building maintenance fund, just like we do all of our other projects.
Well, like I said, I mean, we just enjoy the building, we enjoy having the meals there and the whole business. And I mean, what I heard here tonight is, you know, we could get shifted for entertainment over at the other places, but you're not having the meals done, done there. There's a lot of stuff that goes, it's all in one right now, and it would be nice to keep it all in one.
Karen, just some.
So just to clarify also for you, the city has worked really closely with the senior center board for the last several months. And we have looked at different areas. We've, we've had discussions about the library. We went and looked at Stouse Park. And we took the feedback from the senior center and recognized the fact that the avenues that we have pursued haven't necessarily met the needs of the senior center, and therefore we haven't moved forward with them, right? And right now, we are really trying to figure out a way to keep you in the current building that you're in and have it be successful. So the city, the majority of the city council and the city workers really do feel and are behind that. We just have to figure out how to make that work.
Well, that's what I was asking. I mean, has anybody approached these churches? They should, they would, they donate all kinds of things, though why can't they donate money to the, the senior center?
And that's something that I maybe put back on some of the seniors today, is the idea of, okay, you've kind of told me what you don't want. Now I want you to rally, get together, and show me what you can do, right? Come up with ideas, bring them to us. Because we're on the outside looking in. We're not involved in your senior center on a daily basis. So we need to be educated on what your wants and needs are, and how you are going to be involved in making that happen. So we're there, we're, we're here to support you, but we have to work together as a team.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you very much for listening.
Anybody else have anything, Mr. Helms?
Thank you. Charlotte, I have a question for you. Do you know, is, with the library, the programs the library has, and, and I don't know if you know all the programs the senior center has or not, but are we doubling up on any of this stuff? With programming and stuff that we would?
I, no, I, I don't think we are doubling up. We have, we have a lot of seniors that use the library, not necessarily the same group that uses the senior center. Some overlap, but we do not have the exact same programs, no.
Okay. And I got some, I, I got some figures here that I, I would like to share with everybody about the library, as long as we're on this subject, real quickly. There's 9,200 residents in East Grand Forks, roughly, okay? 5,125 of those residents belong to the library. They have library cards. That's 56%. I don't think there's any other place in the city you can probably say that. 60% of the seniors, there's 1,194 seniors, support roughly, in East Grand Forks, 60% of those seniors have library cards. So a lot of the seniors, like you say, are coming there for other reasons, probably, and doing, and probably going out to the senior center to do things. So the library is really a busy, busy place. So I think we need to, it's, it's something that's very important to East Grand Forks. Obviously, when you got over half your population belonging to it. So I think we need to, if, if there's a way that, there's probably some programs that we could move the library, I'm thinking, but there's others that you wouldn't be able to, like your meals and whatever, because obviously you don't have a kitchen, whatever. But, and as Karen said, I think we just need to work together, and we can probably work through this and figure out something to make all this stuff work, so.
Great. Anybody else have anything?
Can I?
Yeah.
I'm Judy Davali, the director at the senior center. You know, I listened to your meeting last week, and you want to increase programming, but you want to bring in the library at Parks and Rec to take away programming. So are we looking at increasing programming to make the senior center a better place to be? Or are we looking at cutting the hours and bringing somebody over just to watch it, not do any programming, and thus, and thus, seeing the senior center fail, so then we can put it up for sale? I mean, that's how we kind of all feel, like we are being pushed into, well, we got feedback about selling the building, so we're going to go around at the other direction, and we're going to get rid of the help there, and then it'll just fall apart. I mean, that's, I, I just, I don't even know where to start with all this stuff, because it's just so... If you look anywhere nationally, we are about to hit the point where there's more seniors than ever in our, in our communities. So you want to cut the programming for the seniors because there's going to be more seniors coming up? You know, many of you are old enough, if you were not working, you would be able to come to senior center. We encourage everybody to come in there. We currently have people that are, quote, you ask them, well, the, the city council sent me over here to take a look at the building. So we know that the city council are some, somebody or multiple ones are serious about selling it, because they're sending people over to check the building out. We've had three different people come in so far and check the building out. Well, if we're not up for sale, why are, why is the city council, and they're telling us, city council sent me over to take a look at the building? If the building's not for sale, how do they even know to come look at it? Or why?
I can tell you that, nobody on the council at a meeting said to a person to go look at theirs. So if they're doing it, they should not be saying that, because we have, the council has not told anybody to do that.
Well, perhaps not as a council, but as an individual person. If my neighbor
I just want you to know that, it wasn't us saying, okay, we had a meeting, let's send somebody.
Yeah.
I did not do that.
I, I'm, my feeling is that somebody's got a friend that wants to buy it. And, you know, we heard like two weeks ago that financing is available, we'll get it, it's, it's all set up, ready to go. As soon as we put that building up for sale, financing is available to take over that building. And that's exactly what Mr. Vedder just said, that let's sell it January 1st, and it's going to sell fast. How do we know it's going to sell fast? The church across the street from us was, was still for a couple of years.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a person approach me after he was listening to council meetings, and we had discussed through our budget talks that that's a possibility, maybe we should sell the senior center. I had an individual approach me after that meeting and, and said he would buy it. And I told him, if you're serious about buying the senior center, then come up with an offer and bring it to the city. Now, whether he was one out there looking at it, I don't know. We haven't seen an offer from him. You know, I don't know if he's still interested in it or not, or if it was someone else. But I'm surprised at how many people watch these meetings. And so it could be almost anyone that heard that we were interested in it, or thinking about selling it, and are just looking at it and trying to decide whether they want to make an offer or not. But to date, we have not had an offer yet.
Programming to, we're supposed to improve programming, and, you know, from the day, I've been there for six, little over six years, and I want to say I have improved programming. I've added more programming than was before. We have people coming, when I first came into the senior center, it was a very quiet place. People were arguing, it was the only time you heard noise. Now you can walk in there and you hear laughter in the hallways. That is the best thing you could have in any building, is laughter in the hallways. People are coming in and enjoying themselves. They want to come in and, and spend the time, spend their time there. They don't want to be at home. We have one lady that, now that it's summer, she's pretty much there every day. Otherwise, she goes home and sits there with her cat. She's already said, as soon as winter comes, I'm not going to be coming in anymore. She pretty much is a loner even when she comes in, but we've slowly gotten her to play bingo with us. We're slowly, she's eating lunch and visiting. Those are the people that, that's my goal, is to hit those people. And without having somebody as a coordinator or running the, the business, per se, it's not going to happen. You know, you get people call you during COVID, I can't tell you how, how many hours I spent on the phone with people crying. You know, you've got to be there for them, and you've got to have the compassion for them. It's, it's just a senior center. But what is a senior center? It's a place for older people to go. Do they have to, do we go there just to sit there and drool and have coffee? No, we sit there to socialize, get out of the house, find something to do to keep our brains going. It's not just nothing. It's very, the senior center is very important to all of us. This morning, we were told, well, if you want to keep it going, you know, the Blue Line Club, they raise all their own money to be able to keep the hockey programs and stuff going. But these guys have done that already. When they were younger, that's what they did. It's their time to be able to enjoy life too. You know, rentals. Charlotte can serve wine at the library, but I can't have alcohol at the senior center because I'm a city builder. She's a city builder.
Hold on there, Judy.
No, during a special activity.
The library does not serve wine. People who rent the rooms sometimes have wine at their meetings. To be clear.
That would increase readership.
Yes, you're right. But she can have rentals or activities with it. I can't. Well, if I, if I could, if I could rent out the kitchen, you know, how many places can you go to? How many people are, have recently had a family member, somebody want to get married, and you're looking for a place to have the dance, the reception, where you can cook the food, have some, have some alcohol while you're dancing? You know, we open it, opened me up to being able to let people use the kitchen, let people bring in alcohol for a wedding reception, a graduation party, whatever they want. Yeah, there's got to be rules on it, but make that available, you will see more rentals. You know, my rental fee versus the library rental fee, they're not even close. They're not even close. So Charlotte, what do you charge for rentals?
$50 for four hours or less, $100 for a day.
I'm $150 for four hours, $250 for eight hours, anything more than that is $25 an hour. Not even close. So, you know, you want to move us over to the Nash Building? Because the Nash Building is only used three months out of the year. Why is that building not up for sale? Why is that building there? The kids are coming to skate outside. They know it's going to be cold out. You know, they know they need to change their skates. know it's going to be cold out. You know, they know they need to change their skates. They can sit on the ground and change their skates, they don't have a problem with that. But, we keep that building over there and we man it, but you want to get rid of my building. I'm confused. We're doing everything we can for the youth in this town, but we're forgetting our seniors who built this town.
It's quite a leap to say that we want to get rid of that building. I don't know of anyone waiting in the wings to buy that building. I don't know of any strong interest in buying that building. I don't know of any effort to solicit buyers for that building. I've never been part of a conversation to say, "Hey, we got to find someone to buy that building," nor have I been part of a conversation in which someone says, "Hey, I would like to buy that building," and anyone in the room said, "Yeah, go take a look and see what you think." I've never been part of any of that, so you know, not ever. And I tell you that, I hope you can trust me. If I had been part of that, I'd say I had. Now, if someone who's hearing this wants to come and pay top dollar for that building, I think it'd be really cool, because it would give us the cash we need to go out and buy exactly the building we want for our seniors. Free standing, with parking, put the programming in, the footprint we can manage, the utilities we can manage, if LSS is coming in, we can manage. You know what? If someone came and offered top dollar for that building, who happens to hear me right now on YouTube in a week or a month, I think that would be cool. But then I would want to come back in and reconstitute a free-standing senior center for you all, toward how you want it, right? That's what I would look for. So, there would be a really positive side if someone came out of the woodwork offering top dollar for that building, because we would then have the cash we needed to turn around and buy exactly the right building for you all. So, that's what I would say about it. But I've never been part of a conversation like that up to this point, internally with council or staff, with potential investor, never been part of such as any of that, just so you know. The thought of keeping that building for a number of years, if we can make it manageable, it sits very well with me, right? The thought of keeping that building for a long time, if we can work it out and make it work, sits very well with me. I think it's a good facility for our seniors, if we can make it cash flow within reason.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anything else, ma'am?
I could not stop. I've got, I mean, I'm very, very strong advocate for our seniors. I will do anything for them. And they know that, and they think that's why it's become more of a success over there, where people want to come, they enjoy coming there. And changing the food program from 15 to 85 meals a day, that didn't just happen. That's not going to just happen if you have Parks and Rec over there, or the library over there. There's a lot of work that goes with it, a lot of phone calls, a lot of people coming in, and, "Hey, why don't you come try lunch, try do this?" Or, you know, again, like, Monday, we had somebody walk in, another person just checking out the building. He wanted nothing to do with the senior center, with what the senior center is. He was just checking out the building. And many, everybody that was there can, we all had that very same, "Do you play cards?" "No." "Well, we served lunch at 11:30, not interested." "Do you play dominoes or pool?" "Not interested." He was just literally there to check out the building. So, it's like, how does it not make us not feel insecure about our building, when we're seeing people coming in and saying things like that, and telling us that they've been sent over? So, it's like, you know, Reed said he talked to the LSS director this last summer. Carol's been gone for over a year. So, it's been more than that.
Not Carol, Rachel. Rachel.
Okay. Well, when I talked to you about the dime or whatever they would pay, that was from Carol, when I talked to her. But, so even if they would only pay $300 a month, that's better than nothing, you know? Make LSS, the stove breaks down, make them pay for maintenance on it. Why are we paying for it? Why is me, as a taxpayer, paying for another business to be in there making money? I 100% do not get me wrong, I want home-delivered meals in this town. That is essential. I would like to see that, Paula will shoot me, but I would like to see that double, because there's more seniors out there that we're not hitting, that are not, that are making the choice between meals or medication. Just yesterday, we delivered a home-delivered meal to somebody's apartment. He didn't answer the door, so thankfully, our driver went in. He was laying on the bathroom floor with a t-shirt on. He had wet himself, he was not coherent, he had no idea how long he'd been laying there. We saw him on Friday, so we know that at least he was up and about on Friday, but we don't know how long. I can't tell you, we call the police department a lot to have, do welfare checks, because they don't answer the door, so we sense, we can't get ahold of their emergency contact person, or we don't have emergency contact. We send people over to do checks on people. Without us doing that, I mean, there's seniors that are just going to, this gentleman could have laid there for who knows how long, until they smelled him, because that's probably what would have happened. You know, so there's just, there's just so many ways that we need to be, a community this size needs to have a senior center. We need to care about our seniors. We need to care about how, and how we're taking care of them, and how we're perceived by them. You know, they've done their duty of doing fundraising for their church, their schools, their activities when they were raising their children. Now, it's time for them to kind of kick back a little bit and have life a little bit easier. You know, they don't, many families will call or write a letter of thank you, that my mom's got someplace to go, that mom's got someplace, or dad's got someplace that he can go and keep his mind active. You know, with dementia, people, that's the best thing you could do, is keep their minds going. And if we, you know, if we don't have a coordinator there helping them, doing stuff with them, you know, just sitting and visiting with them, or trying to find something that can pick their interest, that they are capable of doing, you know, we've, we've had two people that were playing cards with us that had dementia, pretty good dementia. Unfortunately, one has passed, and the other one has gotten to the point where she can't come anymore. But, we didn't care. Every time it came, her turn to play, do it, we told her exactly what you do, because we're a family. We are going to take care of each other, you know? And that's not going to happen if you just have somebody sitting in an office. You have to have that compassionate person going around and dealing with it. And, I'm pretty sure that if you sent Katie over or Charlotte over, and somebody just crapped all over the bathroom, who's going to clean it up?
I would do that.
You know, it's like...
Sunny.
Sunny.
So, can I ask you a question? As a director there, you know, you talk about, talk different things about maybe fundraising or grants or whatever like that. So, part of your job as a director, is that something you work with, Park and Rec Department Director, or with Reed as the city administrator? Is that something you get together with them, said, "Hey, this is something we need to do, make sure we're going to take care of"? And do you look for those grants at all either, or is that something that, it hasn't been done in the past, it may be something that maybe you can help out with?
Certainly. I have never, ever been told, Judy, you should, you need to make sure you're bringing in $50,000 a year, or any number. I have never been told...
I'm just asking, I'm not sure no one has, but I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, no. I have never been told I need to fundraise a certain dollar value. I've never been told I need to look for grants or anything. I have been...
If I could just jump in, I would say to Judy's credit, she has written grants and received grants. There is one piece of it, though, that we would need more research on our end, is a lot of grants that have become available, that we come through the area agency on aging, or through the senior citizen services kind of listservs. They, you need a nonprofit in a lot of cases to be able to apply for them. So, Judy has run into roadblocks with that, and being able to submit applications to some of these, because we don't hold a 501 status as a city organization. There is a seniors' ink umbrella that Judy sometimes has been able to use. But, I just wanted to put that out there, that Judy has done that in the past, but we're talking about a few thousand dollars at a time here. We have done some advertising and newsletters that has had minimal success. But, to her point, that hasn't been a staff direction in the past, is to look at a specific fundraising goal to offset operating costs.
Mark, real quick, maybe we need a volunteer group with a 501(c)(3), not to try to put you all into part-time jobs, but to have that status, where we would have a nonprofit, we have a membership, we have accountability, we have buy-in from the people that we serve, and they in turn could maybe do some grant proposals that could help fund some of these things. And that's exactly what we do with Home Run Club, with Blue Line Club, Northern Lights Figure Skating. They are able, not that we're trying to draw you into part-time jobs, but to have the credibility of a seniors' group that has that status, that could maybe do some of those grant proposals.
I think seniors' ink has that, don't they?
Are they 501(c)(3)?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's how I've done the area agency on aging. I've been teaching classes where, through Juniper or Trellis, you know, I get paid for how many people attend and how many classes they go to. And then, if I'm doing it, and there's enough people with, I have to apply for these grants to be able to do them all year, but, and if there's enough people in our area, then area agency and agency also gives me funding for it. So, we have, I have gone out, reached out and done that stuff, not being told to do it, but just doing it, because I found it to be, this would be beneficial to our seniors, doing this stuff. So, it's, you know, there's things out there that we try to do. My programming is changes constantly. We tried playing buncle, didn't happen. We tried playing tripoli, we play it three times a week. You know, the mahjong group was meeting, there was a mahjong group that was meeting at Choice Fitness, and it's too cold there. They asked if they could come over to the senior center. Absolutely. You know, so now they're coming over on Mondays. Our dominoes group just plays Tuesdays. Can we start coming over on Thursdays when we're, if we can get a group together? Absolutely. You know, the bridge players are at the Legion on Wednesdays, they get kicked out of there. Can you come over to the senior center? Of course you can. Come over, you know? Everybody's welcome with open arms to come over, and, I don't know, they're just, it's a place where people, I think, over time, we've gotten a better reputation than we had before. I think over time, we have gotten to be more approachable. There's just things that the senior center isn't, isn't our best kept secret in town, the senior center and the LSS meals. Paula and Sheila do an awesome job back there. I think it'd be a huge loss to the city to lose that, to, you lose the senior center and, you know, just touching somebody, sorry, but, but for a senior, just touching them...
Chief's right there, so he's fine.
You know, just touching somebody, it helps them. Some of these seniors have no contact with anybody, so just, you know, I'm a big, walk up to them, I put my arm around them, they put their arm around me, and that's what we're doing.
Well, I think what we're going to do is, I know we're going to have more discussion. I know Karen's going to work with you, because she's on the board, you know, directly. I think we're going to have more discussions with, you know, the staff and Jeremy. I think it's, it's something that, next week, we're not going to go over doing this. That's not what we're going to do. So, so I think, appreciate that everybody came and talked tonight, but I think what I would want is just keep the discussion going and see what we can do. So, I mean, I guess that's my...
I want to just keep my job.
I understand that.
Keep the seniors happy in this community. But, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Anybody else have anything? If not, can move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I know that there's, Mr. President, I know there's a lot of moving parts to that, but, you know, this is all kind of intertwined in our budget discussion. So, if there's maybe an opportunity to reset the discussion back to the budget itself, before we move to the next item. Just the couple of other items that are out there, quickly to touch on, I didn't provide an update to you in the email this afternoon, but the public safety, $8. Those I did show in the packet, that we've got that balanced to a positive now. The price quotes have come back, even on a couple of others, items lower than anticipated. So, we're currently showing that we have $17,000 there left available to spend, that our plan would be that we would use that towards capital expenditure in 2025, towards that, those qualifying expenditures. And then, as we go to that general fund, of course, we're still looking at somewhere in the area of that $64,000 being the total deficit. Of course, that would, a 6% levy would balance that, or looking at some of the other items that are listed in the bottom part of that page as carryovers from items that are currently budgeted in '23 that we know will not be spent. If there's any insight on that, I think we'd be ready to bring forward a budget for 5% next week, with some insights on how to use some of those funds.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, just, I guess, a question, Reed, and looking for others' opinions here. Looking at those general fund carryover savings from the, some of the vacancies there, the account tech, the public work supervisor vacancy carryovers, are these, are these one-time savings costs, or are some of these realized long-term savings due to changes in salaries with different people getting into different positions?
So, these items listed are the, the one-time savings that we'll have in 2023. The long-term 2024 and beyond savings are accounted for in the general budget summary that you have already. So, any of the changes in salaries for, like, someone like myself coming in at more of an entry level, those are already accounted for in our general budget.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else have any thoughts for them, direction? I guess my question's going to be, let's say you bring 6% forward, would that be something that everybody would be comfortable with?
Nope. I mean, anyone else, by all means, weigh in, but, no. The answer on my end will be no.
Okay.
But, by all means, we are a democracy in this room. I just have this pen right here. That's all I got.
Is that the veto pen? Is that your sign?
I thought I took that one from you.
It could be overrid.
No, and that's, you understand that it's 100% to be mindful to the folks paying the bill. That's what that comes down to, to be accountable to the folks paying the bill. It's not one mayor being stubborn. It's a commitment to the people we serve.
So, basically, the bottom portion of that sheet, the last four on there, they're not something that we can say we can cut. They're the one-time things, right?
Well, they're truly savings from 2023, so they're...
Three going into 2020, but it's not actually something in the 24 budget...
Correct. They're not, they're not cuts to the 24 budget, no. They are, they're either going to be an increase to our general fund, or they're going to be budgeted as, budgeted to be used as an expense in '24.
So, where, may I ask, too, where are we at, that percentage of the reserves at?
Do you have that handy?
I would say we're closer to 48%.
Now, that money comes back into the general fund.
So, that will increase it a little bit, yes.
We're, this would bring us to 48%.
Well, we're actually at the 5% when we went through. I think we're at closer to 48%. So, this would increase it more.
Maybe you can explain that, if you're, if we're going up in our general fund balance, and we have places, we're at a negative right now. And so, if we're at a negative, how can our reserves go from 44 up to 48? Even if we're not, because we're not balancing, we're not going...
This money would...
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not at 66,000 times four. How are we getting another...
At the end of year, this money comes back into the general fund.
I understand that.
Yes. That's how the number goes out.
I believe when we did the 5%, we were at 47%. So, if you look at that spreadsheet...
But I thought last week, before you said we were at 44, 48, we're at 44%. So, that's why I'm kind of confused.
Okay. So, if you go to the spreadsheet, I know Ben had made a comment about it, that we're at the negative 64 right now, but with these already savings in effect for 2023, that if you put those just against 2024, there's, it's a difference of 82,000 to the good. So, even if you use those to balance the budget, then our fund balance would be, I'm guessing, 47%.
And to sort of interrupt, but if we're going to look at moving these from '23 to '24, and we're going to use that money to do that function... '23 to '24, and we're gonna use that money to do that function, budget for a parked truck, you know, the count tech, the six months, you know, how are, I mean, that's how are we going up to that? Because if we go into '24 with it, we're gonna use it, how would we still go up in the percentage? And we're not, it might look like it on paper right now in front of you, but the reality of it, next year, it's not gonna be 48%.
Okay, so when I gave you that 47%, these were not included in the fund balance. So we are assuming in 2023 that, from what we budgeted, if you go to the summary sheet, from what we budgeted to what we spent, we, we are not dipping into our, to our reserves. And I believe it was like at 47%. Okay, so we also don't know if departments have money left over that they're not going to spend, which typically happens every year. That is not in the equation. So we're saying in 2023, we're going to break even from what we budgeted. So the $147,000 on this paper here is going to increase our fund balance, our, our reserves, which is one and the same. We also know that the school district paid $110,000 in October and in April, so they will not be making a payment in April like they typically do, they'll be doing it in October. So yes, it's a cash flow item, but it does increase our fund balance by $110,000 for year end of 2023. So if you add the 110 and the 147, we're at 250. That, we know our fund balance will increase as of December 31st, 2023.
I just wanna make sure we have it right, because in the last six months, I think we've seen it from 42% up to 48%, and I just don't want us all of a sudden realize we're at 42% and 44% and we're going backwards still. I just, that's just my worry is that, you know, we've seen these different numbers, I know there's things have changed and we've found things that, okay, this is not being used this year, I get that, but seems to me that.
And I, I do not have that exact number reading, I didn't look at that, I apologize for that.
I'm just trying to get a handle and to make sure we all understand it.
Right, and I think when we even looked at dipping into our fund balance, it was at 45%. So it's anywhere from, from 45 to 48 would be my guess. And the state says they want it between 35 and 50.
I get that, but.
Oh, no, I just, that's for everybody else, I know, you understand that.
Anybody else have any thoughts on how we get rid of the negative 64,000?
I know, for example, in 2023, we had, you know, excess 150, so other years, we have dipped into the fund balance, and then other years, we didn't have to use it. Because, you know, our departments are very conscientious, if they, you know, budgeted for this, and it came in less than what they expected, they don't spend, spend it on something else. We're very lucky that way, they're not with the attitude, if I don't use it, I lose it. Or, you know, they couldn't get it this year, so they have a savings this year, but they made sure they budgeted for the next year.
Mayor? If there would be a way that staff could work with our seniors center coordinator on a possible hybrid way of providing services, meaning that that position could be reduced to one of these items that have been identified, and we could do some backfill with Parks and Rec and Library, you know, maybe there's a hybrid option that could go forward, that would do a partial savings even as we bring in staff from other departments. If we decide we'd have to cut hours over there, because you guys, the, the folks that we would be bringing in couldn't come in at 20 hours each, so for sure, we wouldn't be able to keep the same hours there. It seems to me there is a need for some additional staff time, and maybe there would be a hybrid that could be worked out, where Judy could continue on in a, in a slightly more limited role. I know that wouldn't be ideal for you, but it might be a way to keep the service level high and, and still accomplish some of our budget needs that we have.
So if we used these bottom four on this sheet to help balance the budget for this year, that would give us time to continue to work on creating a plan for the seniors center. I mean, if we, if we funded the seniors center currently, for sure for the next year, work on a plan for creating some type of revenue service for them, then is that something that we would be willing to consider?
With that, we'd have to approve 6% tax levy, that's what we would have to do.
Even with these bottom four?
No.
No.
No, that would be the 5%, they would cover that.
But you'd have to take all of them.
Actually, would you have to take all of them? No, 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 no.
No, there's 82,000 left after you take the four.
Let's say you're not gonna do number one anyway right now, so let's just.
Right.
And again, if you're not taking them from the budget this year, and you're moving it to next year, and you're still gonna buy that Parks truck, there's, there's no savings there.
Well, there is, because we budgeted.
You're pushing it into the next year, but you're not really gaining that money, okay? Well, I'm not gonna buy that, I'm gonna take that money from this year to next year, you're still gonna use that money to buy the truck.
Mr. President, if I could.
Park's truck is ordered.
The, the issue we have, like, I think that's, to me, that's what I would recommend the proposal would be, if I can make that clear to everyone. The Parks truck in the 2024 budget is already budgeted with its own $60,000 here, and there's still the 50 hanging out from 2023 that's gone unspent. So we're technically, as it stands today, in two separate calendar years, have 110,000 earmarked for a Parks truck that's gonna cost $57,000 roughly. So we, we, that's one, I think, simple decision, is that 50 that's hanging out in 2023 that's gonna go unspent, we would just apply that to, truly apply that to 2024 and reduce our 2024 expenditure by $50,000, if that makes sense.
My question then leads, leads to this, why would we budget from '23 for that truck, and then also budget in '24 knowingly?
That'd be, that'd be a question for Carla then.
Hang on, let me finish this. So, I mean, you're doubling up on that, so us looking at the budget for '24, we're realizing, okay, we have this dollar amount here, but guess what, we had it back here, but we're gonna put it in there again, but we still have the money over here. So really, you're not giving us a true picture of where we're at in 2024, because you're doubling it up from last year. And you, if you're gonna move it to the next year, just move the money again then, you're not, doesn't make sense to me that 110,000, whatever it is, that we're only gonna use 50 some of it, but why would we do that?
Okay, so the state law, government accounting is that you have to come for what you, you budget for what you planned to spend for the year. So we planned to spend it in 2023, it didn't go through. We couldn't, it wasn't available, couldn't get it. So in essence, that increases our fund balance, but in 2024, we have to budget for what we expect to spend. So we have to budget it again, because we expect to spend it in our budget. So if we don't put it in our budget, then when we do our financial statements, we are over budget of what we actually budgeted. And what we also have to do is that we have to have a balanced budget to the state. So we have the $147,000 as savings in 2023. So technically, we can't just put them in our budget for 2024, it's actually part of our fund balance or reserve now as of 2023. So when we budget for 20, excuse me, 2024, and we want to use $64,000 of that to budget, to balance our budget, then we need to say on our state forms that we intend to use our fund balance of $64,504 to balance our budget. But we all know that that is coming from basic, it's like cash flow, but it's different in government than it is in profit enterprises.
So why would we not just tell us the negative balance right now is $14,000?
Because we have to.
I'm just asking the question.
To get to that, you'd have to draw 50 out of reserves, that would be a commitment to draw 50 out of reserves.
Technically, it wasn't reserves begin with the '23, okay?
Well, we'll be, because we're budgeting for 2024, we have to expect.
'23.
That we started from here first, yes. I know it's confusing, I'm sorry, it's not my role.
But it was line on for trucks.
Clarice can expand, expand on it.
You should brought the bananas.
So, Mr. Olson, if I could, even to your point, to why we didn't just say 14, really, the 73,000 from Fund 681 is in the same category as that 50 from the truck. If you guys are all comfortable that that's gonna be used in 2024 calendar year, that also is gonna show up as a use of general fund balance in order to balance the budget for next year.
You know, but that's.
So it may be.
That's really apples or oranges, because that fund sat there forever.
Right. Just looking at the actual budget summary in front of you, though, that we're gonna show some number of general fund use as a balance to our budget, if that's, if that's on the table for us.
So when we were at 11%, did we have this information on the 2024 at $50,000, was that on the bottom of our sheet, where we're at 11%?
No.
I don't believe so.
No. And we weren't quite, we weren't sure on, on, if some of these were going to be filled or not.
So if we knew that we weren't gonna have this truck here this year, and we also budgeted for '24, why didn't we, we didn't have the discussion a long time ago from the 11% of us taking this 50,000 off of it? Instead of us going for months of looking at these things, and then also, no, guess what, this is on here.
And maybe Reid can answer to that, but we weren't sure.
But you're the finance director. Reid's the city administrator.
Yes, we're working on that together.
I know you oversee that, but.
Yes, and sometimes I'm, I'm also directed on what I should share or not. So, you know, when we first talked about, we, we didn't talk about what kind of, what the fund balance things would be. So we didn't look at these items, and we did not know that the count technician wasn't gonna be filled until next July. We didn't know the public work supervisor wasn't not gonna be filled, and, and so that's why we came up with those.
Those are, those are people, those are FTEs, this is a truck. I understand that we were given direction about the account technician, we had that discussion on that. But if we could say this truck for 50 grand gets us the negative 14,000, would the mayor be fine with that?
Absolutely. I mean, if we're down at 5%, and if we're gonna roll that in, yeah, 5%.
Okay.
And now, I, I just, so we're all kind of on the same page here also, real quickly. Every year that we've done this, even the years where we agreed to dip into savings to the tune of $200,000, when we mopped up the previous year and reoriented for the next year, it wasn't 200, because our good finance team will take and they will estimate revenues a little low, they'll estimate expenses a little high, so that we don't have a negative budget at the end of the year beyond what we think. So to the tune of a couple hundred thousand a year generally, our projections are favorable against budget, and that's a good, good way to budget. It doesn't dig us, that's why we're seeing still, even with our fairly tight budgets, we're seeing a pretty solid reserve balance being maintained, and that is, again, it's a credit to how they do it. So these numbers that we're looking at, that, that are positive numbers at the end of this year, this is not unusual. This is, Carla, would you agree, this is what we seek on the year after year, this is how we end up with a positive balance above and beyond what we anticipated.
Which is really only like, I know when we checked before, it was only 3% off of revenues and stuff. Now, to the truck of the 50,000, I don't believe we even had that information that we wouldn't get it, for sure or not, until January or not. I mean, and, and we all know how supply issues have been, and there was no guarantee that it was coming in December, or it was coming in January. So that is why it wasn't, that we had, you know, kept it there, because we weren't sure for one thing or not. But yes, we, and, and that's how we do have to budget. The other thing that has happened in the past few years is if you look at what we've collected on taxes, we have had more uncollectibles than we have in the past. It has slowly been going higher and higher. I think last year, we had 150,000 more of uncollectibles than we did the year before, though we do budget for the whole tax amount.
So if we bring forward this at a negative 14, we can bring it to next week to vote, is everybody okay with that? I guess.
That'd be at 5%.
At 5%.
Yeah.
The question is, are we willing to spend $64,000 out of our reserves to balance the budget?
I, I would rather.
In cloak and dagger of a truck.
So it's really 14.
So I, I just want to, to be really clear, the 73,000 from Fund 681 is also gonna show up on that line, so it's really 137, 538, 79 cents.
I understand that.
I don't like the 79 cents.
Okay.
So, our fund balance, though, stays around 48%?
Say 45, 45 to 46, 47. It's been higher than that, but the last few years, and our estimates, it's, that's been at 46, 45, 46. I, I will have that information for you, the best as I can do it on Tuesday.
Yeah, because I think that's Mr. Olson's question is, is, what exactly is that percent gonna be in relation to a 5% levy or a 6% levy? I get not wanting to dip into the reserves, but like, to Mr. Hutton's point, all of these are going to be dipping into our reserves. But at the same time, I don't see the point of raising taxes, the levy to 6% versus keeping it at 5, because if we raise it to 6, then our 5% levy next year is actually more than what it would be as a 5% levy next year if we stick to 5% this year. So if our fund balance stays closer to 48, which I believe is where Mr. Olson is more comfortable with, I think a 5%.
52 would be better.
But the only way to do that would be to go up to 7 or 8%, and we all know that's not gonna happen. So, I'm good, I'm good at 5%.
I really do challenge us, let's work as a team with our seniors and help that get closer to where the revenues come in, whether it's some, some grants that we can get, or some rent from LSS, whatever it might be, let's work together. And, and again, we're not looking for a part-time job for y'all, you've paid your dues and we appreciate it, and yet at the same time, we wanna do right by, by all of, all of our citizens.
Thank you, sir. I guess if we have nothing else on the budget, I'd like to move on, if that's fine.
Good.
Number six, SRF Consulting, Bridge Study Planning and Funding Opportunity. Mr. Hutton?
Thank you again, Mr. President. We had a bridge study meeting today, a project management team meeting with SRF Consulting, the group that's been commissioned to put this long-range bridge study together, and they did share that there's a new funding opportunity available in front of us. It's a federal grant called the Raze Grant. It has a very quick turnaround, that the applications for this grant are due February 28th of next year, with award announcements in June of this year, and it can be used for planning dollars to be, to be, to study and consider any additional or new bridge locations and how they would cross the river. It fits right in line with the work that SRF is working towards right now. And due to the short turnaround, we just thought we should add it to the agenda right away tonight. Available funds or, or grant dollars, it could be available range from, as low, as low as $175,000 and as high as 16-plus million dollars for applications. Because we are considered a rural community of less than 200,000 people, we would be able to apply for 100% of the need, so no matching dollars required on this. SRF hasn't sent a formal estimate over to us yet, we just discussed it at 1:00, 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock this afternoon, but they estimated just verbally an additional 25 to 30,000 on our current contract, to be able to work really quickly on putting this grant application together. Because the City of East Grand Forks is the lead on the current study that's being commissioned, it would be easiest that we would continue to be the lead and, and just amend our current contract as the lead agency on this application as well. That said, I would start tomorrow even contacting our partners with the counties and with the City of Grand Forks to see if they'd be willing to continue the, the four-way even split of that additional cost to share in the grant. So I'm just looking for feedback and hopefully for support to be able to move forward with that grant application.
If they are not in favor of it, Grand Forks, since the discussion has been had this last week, we would not be able to go after those grants then? If we need, because we need to amend their contract. So if they're not in agreement, would we not be able to go after these grant monies?
That's a fair question. I, I think initially, the easiest and quickest route is to amend the current contract, but we don't necessarily have to, just run an amendment. If we wanted to execute a separate contract for these grant writing services alone, we'd have the ability to do that.
And if they're not in agreement, let's say all three of them aren't, would, that would. And if they're not in agreement, let's say all three of them aren't, would, that would fall onto the CED's Grand Forks, correct? And then, if we got the grant money, would that, and this is just a forward-thinking question of, how would that be money be used, could it be used for our twenty-five percent that we have to kick in? Or fifty percent and not be shared with City of Grand Forks? I don't know, I'm just wondering.
The other part of that conversation, Mr. President, is the current effort is for South End Bridges, right? So if this would succeed in bringing in some number, a hundred and seventy-five to sixteen million dollars to move Merrifield and the inner-city bridge together both, I would think it would be very short-sighted not to try to capitalize on that, if I were in the place of Grand Forks.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there. Mr. Larson?
Yeah, and I can't fully answer your question, but the impression I got in, in the meeting, that East Grand Forks is the lead entity. If we wanted to apply for this directly, you know, that is something we could do. It was mentioned that letters of support would be strongly, or would be looked on very favorably by the reviewers. So we'd wanna move very quickly there to get the letters of support, ideally cost sharing as well from our counties, potentially even right across the river here. But including our elected officials, people here in Minnesota and in Washington, DC. If we could get strong letters of recommendation, that would really help with, with our application here. And to clarify, the funding that would be available here is only available for planning and design, not construction or acquisition right away.
I understand that.
Totally different things. But I think it is a great opportunity. SRF did allude to, after they floated out that dollar value, that there was some potential savings within our existing contract that could roll into some value in, in this approach, maybe being less than the twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, which, which would be ideal. So I think it, it's, it's a great opportunity for us. We'll wait and see the proposal, of course. But it's, it's a really exciting opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Megan, just, I'm sorry. Anybody else, I think it's great, I mean, just to keep us updated with it, so, anybody else have anything on that? If not, obtain a motion adjourned?
Move.
Moved by Larson?
Second.
Second by veteran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold with same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.